I'll go ahead and call, since it's so quiet and also since it's officially 5:45, we'll call our meeting to order. We certainly appreciate everyone being here this evening. We have a quorum of our board team, that's item one on our agenda. Item two is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Randy Bush, the pastor at Harris Avenue Baptist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation. Thank you.
Father, we come today and we just thank you for the opportunity of prayer. Father, we just thank you that we live in a country where we can pray. But Father, we also thank you that we live in a country where we have a choice, that whether we pray or whether we don't. We just thank you for that freedom. And Father, we just thank you for our leaders and we ask you to bless them and protect them. And Father, give them wisdom to know what the truth is. And Father, help us as a people to know and hear and listen to the truth. Father, we ask you to bless the leaders of this school and school board. Father, help them to know what to do with the resources they have. Father, as they shape the minds of the future leaders of our nation and of our cities and our counties. Father, we just ask you to bless them for their time of service and meet every single need in our school districts today. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate that. Okay, our next item, we're going to have some really awesome-looking young folks from Austin Avenue, I mean, from Austin Elementary School. If they'll come forward as I read out their names. We have Cabo de la Garza, Christian de la Garza, Emilio Gonzalez, and Hannah Welker. And if y'all will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If y'all will hang on. I tell you what, if they'll hang on, they can stand up here and y'all can take a picture of them if any of the parents would like to do that. Yeah, face that way where your parents can take pictures if they would like to do that.
There you go. Good job, handsome, good-looking pledge crew.
Thank y'all very much. Now, you know, in the summer, we don't, we miss out on having the kids be here and lead us in our pledges, so it's truly a treat for them to come, so we appreciate them and also their parents getting them here, so thank y'all so much. Our, let me start out with our script and then I'll move to the next item. Good evening and welcome, as president of the Board of Trustees, the San Angelo Independent School District. I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. Also welcome those of you who might be watching this tape of our meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our district and the students of our district. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most if all, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that while our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in, in the public, it's not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team the opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item listed, not listed on our agenda. And additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of the SIAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape may adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cellphones at this time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school district. Our next item's item four. I just referenced that. That's for public comment. This is for anyone wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening. Do we have anyone wishing to do that? If not, we'll move forward to item five, which is our recognitions. And our first recognition's going to be the recognition of some awesome folks from the DESK project, and Derek Jackson is going to take care of that for us. Derek?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. This evening, we have a very special recognition. We're recognizing our DESK board. The people on the DESK board are very near and dear to our hearts here in San Angelo ISD. Twelve years ago, their president and founder, Board President Eric Wilson, who couldn't make it today unfortunately, he's out of town on business, but he had an idea. Knowing the need in our district for students who did not have school supplies, he had an idea that he would form a board of concerned citizens, and they would set about to raise funds to, raise funds for the students of SISD who were in need of school supplies. I will share with you the amount they have given this year for school supplies and their total since the program started. This year, our DESK board gave students of San Angelo ISD through its campuses, school supply money in the amount of $59,039.66. For those who may not know, DESK stands for Donate Educational Supplies to Kids. The organization, since its inception, has raised and given to campuses in our district over $596,000 for the purpose of meeting the needs of those in the district who are unable to purchase their own school supplies. Each campus in the district each year receives a percentage of the total amount of money raised based on the number of students who receive assistance through our free and reduced meal programs. At the annual DESK presentation each August, campus administrators are given their funds so that supplies may be purchased before the school year begins. This evening, we are honored to have several members of DESK here with us tonight. Dr. Detloff, would you please join me and come forward and we can recognize the DESK members who are here this evening? DESK members, when we call your name, please come forward, and Dr. Detloff will present your certificate, and we would like for you to stay as well for a group photo, and then our board members and our administrators would like to greet you and say thank you as well. So with that said, we'll start off with Vicky Lozo.
We'll do them all, we'll do them all together. Ken Grimm. I still said it wrong. Andy and I had a fun conversation about his last name, and I had it down and I still butchered it, Andy, I apologize. Please join me in giving our DESK board a round of applause on behalf of the board members, administration, team, faculty, and staff. That's right. Good job, sir. Do you guys shake hands here around the panel? Yes. Of course, I'd love to shake your hand too, even though I missed your name up there, my friend. We have more, but they are not in attendance today, actually, so that will do it for tonight. Mr. Lehman, that concludes our presentation. Okay. Thank you very much. And thanks to DESK and their continued support for our children and our students. We appreciate y'all very much. Our next item is also under recognitions. Gary Clark with Synergistics, Regional President for Synergistics is here to present an award to the district, so welcome, Mr. Clark. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Dr. Detloff, I probably should have asked you maybe just to stay down if you could come back, please. Members of the board, audience, it's a privilege to be here tonight. I want to just remind the board, in June of 2014, the school district entered into a partnership with Synergistic to reduce unneeded utility costs. So, really want to applaud the board for your vision, first of all, to undergo that initiative. Special thanks to Dr. Detloff and certainly Dr. Bright for his support. Behind me, I was hoping that they followed me up here, they said they weren't, so I'm glad that they came up here. But we have, of course, your two energy specialists, Steve Van Hooser and Robert Rumpf. These are the quarterbacks of the program, they're out in the buildings working with the staff, reducing unneeded energy costs and also trying to make the buildings more comfortable while they're occupied. Principals, teachers, custodial staff, HVAC, maintenance, everyone in the food service, everyone in the school district has had a part in this. And I'm pleased to announce, I'm not sure if you know the latest numbers, but as of the July bills, you've avoided about $2.3 million in unneeded energy costs. And so, that deserves a hand right there for the school district. So, congratulations. I've been doing this for 24 years with Synergistic, and I will tell you that San Angelo has been a textbook program from top to bottom. Everyone in the organization has really bought into this, and it shows by the performance. The two individuals behind me are the face of the program, but everyone has really had a big impact. So, what I would like to do is present this plaque to you, Dr. Detloff, on behalf of Synergistic. We look forward to some increased savings down the road, but this is to recognize your efforts and your success so far. So, Synergistic, the Energy Conservation Company, for conserving our nation's precious resources through the exceptional implementation of Synergistic's energy management program and serving as a model of energy conservation to fellow educational organizations. San Angelo Independent School District has hereby presented the Energy Excellence Award for excellence in environmental and financial resource stewardship. Signed, Dr. William S. Spears, Chairman and Founder, Synergistic. So congratulations on a job well done.
Okay, I think that concludes item five on our agenda. Item six is our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Hernandez and a second from Mr. Dindell to approve our board minutes, our August 7, 2017 budget workshop, our August 14, 2017 special financing pre-agenda meeting, our August 21, 2017 regular board meeting, our August 28 special meeting, and our August 31 strategic planning workshop. Do we have any comments or questions from our board team concerning our minutes? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is something I've been looking forward to for a long time, the reports section, and we've got our Aqua Squad update, so, and I've got Dr. Detloff's name on it, so I'll turn it over to him.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lehman, and I'll turn this quickly over to Joy Morgan. And students, you'll be pleased to know that I've been trying to provide this presentation, but the board keeps telling me, no, sir, we're going to wait till the real squad is here, the Aqua Squad. So, thank you for your attendance, and come on up, students, and Ms. Morgan.
So much, Mr. Lehman and the board, for having us. We have to admit, we're very excited, but we're a little nervous too. Joy Morgan, I am the coordinator of Aqua Squad, and walking up is Justin McClure, our lead teacher, and Jamie Barker, co-teacher. So you can see immediately that they have been in great hands with these teachers. And behind me is the 2017 awesome and amazing Aqua Squad.
You can pull that mic, I see it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Orion Shaikh, and I attend the 8th grade at Robert E. Lee Middle School. As you may know, we're the Aqua Squad. Well, you might be wondering, what is the Aqua Squad? The Aqua Squad is a, the Aqua Squad is a program formed nine years ago that is sponsored by SIAISD and SAMFA, or San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts. Every summer, the program picks, handpicks, a group of middle school students to research our local watershed. During the month of July, we looked at the many problems with our water, such as mesquite trees and pollution. We also went on a trip to Philadelphia, which Paula will talk to you about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paula Masonette, and I'm a 7th grader at Glenn Middle School. During the Aqua Squad camp, we traveled to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, to learn about the water issues they deal with. We met up with a group named Project Flow, and they study their water situation as well. We toured the Philadelphia watershed with them and learned where they clean their water and how they do it. They have a large basin with different sections of non-treated water, then the water gets mixed together with different chemicals and goes through a small dam system, where they finish the process. Later on, we viewed other several basins. These were different because they help animals. They do this to keep the ecosystem natural.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Annaliese Zamarron, and I'm an 8th grader at Lincoln Middle School, and I'll be talking about the three highlights we did here in San Angelo, Texas. We went on a field trip to see our local watershed in Tom Green County. We went to the chicken farm and made watershed maps out of clay, and last but not least, we visited the head of the river ranch outside Cristovol where the headwaters of the South Concha are. There, we tested the water quality by identifying the organisms inside of the water.
Good afternoon. My name is Justin McClure, and I am the lead teacher for Aqua Squad. I also teach right next door at Glenn Middle School, 6th grade science. And this summer, on top of everything else that they said they did, Aqua Squad also put together traveling science kits. The purpose of these science kits is for teachers, 7th and 8th grade teachers, to check them out and use them inside of their classroom to teach important water topics to their students. And these science kits are all-inclusive, they have everything that the teachers need to teach the lesson, including typed-up lesson plans. So, the Aqua Squatters worked really hard on these, and so I'm going to let them explain what's in each kit. Thank you.
I'm Ryan Tyler, and I go to Lee Middle School in the 7th grade.
Hi, I'm Samuel Helm, and I attend 8th grade at Lee Middle School. Our science project was a watershed runoff project that allows students to make their own watershed runoff maps out of Play-Doh.
Hi, I'm Jack McGlaughlin. I attend Glenn Middle School in 7th grade. This is Paula, you already know her. Our project is the Water Filtration Creation Kit, in which the students would create their own water filtration system with household items. That is all, goodbye.
Hello, I'm Max Cook, and I'm an 8th grader at Glenn Middle School, and our project is a water testing kit, which tests the quality of the water for pH levels and hardness.
Hi, I'm Hannah Richardson. I'm an 8th grader at Glenn Middle School, and our science kit is about comparing man-made watersheds versus natural watersheds, and they get to do that by building their own
We were able to make a project that was very flexible and adaptable, so teachers can change it as much as they want. It uses homemade items, I mean, homemade materials. And it also lets the students have fun, but also engaging and creative activity.
I'm Melody Smith, a Lee Middle School 8th grader.
I'm Arabella Dunlap, and I'm a 7th grader at Glenn Middle School.
Our activity comes in two parts, the first being where they see how the water gets polluted with all the toxins and whatnot, and the second part being they collect a sample and figure out what the pollutants are and how they could diminish them.
And I'm Jamie Barker, and I was the person who ran papers and corralled the kids and got them in the vehicles and got the vehicles and had a lot of fun with them. And we'd like to thank you all for supporting it for the last nine years. It's a good program, and they've enjoyed it and learned a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, parents, y'all come forward if y'all want to take pictures as well. Come on up, you can come up. Okay, y'all hang on till everybody gets through. That's right. Yeah. That's a pretty patient group right there. I think our next report is actually item C, which is an update on academic progress, and I think Dr. Ritter's going to help us with that.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. We just wanted to give a few updates on our academic progress in the district, and first to draw your attention to, we put on your, in your places, a copy of our newly-developed learner profile that you all helped develop last year. We developed this with the input of over 200 people in the district and probably even more than that, after we spoke with parents and kids, lots and lots of people provided input for this. And this is really becoming kind of the compass for which we make our decisions in, through instruction and our curriculum writing. We had curriculum writers today, our secondary on this, the math and science that they're going to be writing for middle school and high school teachers. They were here today, it was a great day. Tomorrow, we'll have elementary, so we're starting on that phase of it. Last year, we wrote language arts, social studies, and middle school math. So, this year, we were able to hand them this learner profile and talk to them about the importance of these areas that we really are trying to focus on with our students to help them be ready for their future. One of the areas I want to draw attention to is with critical thinker. In our district right now, one of the highlights, and you all have supported us so well with this, is our focus on literacy in the district. And we have upgraded our guided reading to where our students are able to have comprehensive literacy approaches in the classroom, with the first step being a line assessment of their individual reading levels, so that we can put them in reading groups with guided reading with their reading teachers. And we're very excited about this because we have had a lot of great information provided to us, and our students themselves are exhibiting that perseverance and resilience in challenges and learning how they can really improve their own reading, their literacy levels, and applying reflection and self-assessment. They're part of this process in knowing where they are and what they're going to do to continually improve and become really strong in literacy, which is our goal. So, we thank you so much, and we look forward to the next steps in this. Any questions?
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Our next item is also a report. We get this as part of our Friday Facts, which is our student enrollment report. It's a little bit old, and this is from the 8th day of school. I think our most recent report shows us up about 40 students, which was as recent as today, so that's really good news. But part of our packet on Friday included the 8th day of school, which was August 28. And then we have one final report that Mr. Kimball's going to give for us on human resource and professional development, and the things we're doing to improve in those areas.
So, thank you for your time this evening, and I'll just briefly share with you some of the things we talked about last week, and that, those were that we had about 140 new teachers that we hired this year. Those included about 20 coaches, about eight different administrators, and some other roles as well. And we found that most of our teachers that left the district last year were in those, the range of zero to five years, so that's a focus for us as to how do we retain those folks. And we do that through our PD. We provide them a new teacher academy in the summer, as well as during the school year for our zero-year teachers. And we also provide Learning Paloozes for our existing staff, as well as our Engage Technology Conference. And we had over 1,300 participants in those events this summer. So a lot of our teachers found value in that, and I think part of that's because our own staff, our own teachers, step up to the plate, and they are the ones presenting a lot of those sessions for us. And I think teachers really enjoy learning from their, from their peers. So one of the things that we focus on is our recruiting efforts, and so last week, I shared with you some of the different job fairs that And so last week I shared with you some of the different job fairs that we attend at the different universities. Mr. Parker mentioned, he asked about University of Texas at El Paso. And we actually checked into that. We have their date on our calendar. So we have added University of Texas, El Paso, as well as University of Texas at Austin. And Texas A&amp;M University are the other two that we've added this year. We attend job fairs in Lubbock, Canyon, of course ASU, Abilene, San Marcos, those areas, but we've added those as well. The other thing that we're adding this next year is pop-up job fair. So a job fair that we'll have here in SAISD, we'll have one in May shortly after graduation. So if any of those student teachers haven't got a job yet, we'll be there ready to hire. So those are some of the efforts that we'll use moving forward to recruit. And then, of course, our professional development and the work that the curriculum and instruction department's doing, I think teachers find value in that. So that helps us retain our folks.
Matt, why don't you help by explaining why it's so important that we recruit as far as shortages and things like that?
So this fall, we have about 25 student teachers. Most of those are from ASU. We have about three from other various programs. And in the fall, in the spring, that number will go up a little bit, maybe between 40 and 60. So that's around 65 to 75 total student teachers coming out of ASU. And when we're hiring 140 teachers, if every single one of those student teachers decided to stay in San Angelo and teach for SAISD, we would still be short. And so we use a variety of tools to recruit. We use a lot of social media. And so we try to pull from other regions of the state. There is a shortage in teaching candidates in the state as well as the nation. It's a trend, so it's not just our district alone. And we actually had a meeting today with ASU about student teaching to continually continue to work with them on improving the processes to get more teachers in our system. So that's the reason we travel.
Okay, thanks. Other questions for Mr. Kimball? You did pretty good. You didn't use too much, you know, schoolies. You said PD, which is, you know, professional development.
Sorry.
But other than that, you did well. So thanks for that presentation. Anybody else have any questions? Thanks, Matt. We appreciate it. I think that concludes the report section of our agenda. We'll move to item eight, which are consent items A through F. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through F?
Move to approve consent items A through F.
Second?
We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our consent items. Item As to consider donations. Item Bs to consider bid number 17-015-09-18 for first aid and nursing supplies. Item C on the consent agenda is consider bid number 17-016-09-18 for athletic trainer supplies. Item Ds to consider extracurricular status of the 4-H organization and adjunct faculty agreement with Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service of the Tom Green County. Item E is to ratify the administration's action in seller properties. These are properties that are in, owns, that are for sale based on the, our, the others, others in the community, the city and the county that might be trying to sell property so we can get them back on the tax roll. Had a brain block there. And then F is consider a firm to appeal the state comptroller's annual property value study, which we've used the same firm for a number of years to help us in that appeal. They're on a basis where if they don't get any return back from, from their appeal, then we don't have to pay them. So it's a pretty good arrangement. Any questions or comments concerning items A through F? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item, Mr. Henry's going to help us, and that's to consider bid number 17-14, which is HVAC replacement. Jason, thanks for being here.
Thank you. I would like to thank Mr. Lehman and Dr. Detloff and the members of the board for having us here today. Today I'm here to present to you bid 17-14 HVAC replacement. Currently, we have 15 of our 17 elementary schools, elementary campuses that have multipurpose buildings that do not have conditioned air. These buildings are used for a variety of school activities, including and not limited to PE classes, school assemblies, and parent and student functions. Upgrading these buildings would make them more usable for the campus and more enjoyable when using. The full scope of this project will include full install of the HVAC units, concrete pads for the units, fencing around the units, all required duct and electrical work, and the replacement of the roll-up doors with more energy-efficient insulated roll-up doors. Two bidders responded to this bid, Frontier Construction of Del Rio, Texas, and MidTex of Midland. With the assistance of Dr. Bright, Maintenance Director Jim Ellison, and Architect Gary Donaldson, we individually scored these bids. MidTex received the highest score and had the lowest price for the project. I would like to point out two important factors contributing to this award. Start time being one. Frontier was not going to be able to start until 30 days after the contract was signed. And MidTex said that they would be able to start 10 days after the delivery of equipment. Completion date, Frontier had 100, or 330 days, calendar days listed as their completion date. MidTex had 150 calendar days. MidTex did submit a staggered schedule of work and a breakdown of three groups which contained five schools at a time. At this time, we are recommending MidTex be awarded the contract to replace the HVAC at the 15 elementary school multipurpose buildings. Their bid price came in at 1.75 million and scored a 97.88.
Okay. Mr. Henry, are there questions or comments for Jason? Yep. Dr. Detloff?
Mr. Henry, first I just want to thank you, Dr. Bright, and especially the members of the board. This has been on my nine-year to-do list. So I appreciate the funding to support this cause. I think it helps with student safety in the months of August, September, and May, as well as it makes a more pleasing environment for many of the after-school gatherings, events, meetings, open houses in the evening at our elementary schools. So thank you for making this happen.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve MidTex Mechanical as the contractor to replace the HVAC units at the 15 elementary school multipurpose buildings that currently do not have them.
Second?
Thanks. We have a motion for Mr. Dindal and a second for Mr. Gallegos. I think that bid does include a contingency, right? Which is 225,000.
Yes, that's right.
So hopefully they'll get it done without us spending all the contingency. But the current bid is for $1,750,000. Any other comments or questions from our board team?
I'm just, I'm glad we finally got to this because this is something we've talked about for a good while.
Yeah, we have, and it's been, you know, something we really needed to do.
Some of the functions at some of the schools and it was just sweltering in those, sweltering. It really was hot in there. So I'm glad we're moving forward and getting this done.
Thanks. Are there other comments or questions? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on that. With that staggered schedule, maybe we'll have everybody taken care of shortly. Our next item's item 10, which is to consider 2017-2018 waiver and to conduct a hearing for optional flexible school day.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, board, and Dr. Detloff. This is a required public hearing for a waiver that allows students to participate in the optional flexible school day program. This would be our PACE, our current PACE program, which stands for Preparing Area Youth for Success. PACE is an alternative education program serving as a dropout prevention recovery program designed to respond to individual needs of students. PACE is an alternative path to graduation for students who have not been successful in the traditional setting. All students are required to meet the foundation graduation program as set by TEA as well as all-state assessment requirements. To date, PACE has graduated 810 students. The projected number of students that will graduate in December is 43. It is the administration recommendation that the board approve the waiver to continue to operate the PACE program under the optional flexible school day program. Any questions?
Yeah, Shelley, I was going to ask you, is this just for the PACE students only?
Yes, sir.
Or say like you have a student that one of the schools, they can't use it at like Central or Lakeview or freshman campuses?
No, sir. They are traditional school. Their hours are traditional, whereas PACE can be flexible.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, explain the flexibility just so people that aren't familiar with the program will, you'll know about that.
Yes, sir. Flexibility, the hours flexibility is a student at PACE will attend 20 hours per week, which is 720 hours for the year. A little bit of flexibility. We have some very scheduled times from like 7:30 to 11:30. And then a lot of those students will go to work afterwards, or they will come in the afternoon where it is 11:30 till 3:30. And so it allows them to take care of children, go to doctor's visits with children, or be employed somewhere because of finances. So that's really what the flexibility is. In a traditional school, there are schools, for example, Central High School, Lakeview High School, their school starts at 7:40 and ends at 3:30. So that's a, you know, difference in hours there.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions from our board team? So we need a motion to approve the waiver for 2017-2018 academic year.
Move to approve the waiver that's been discussed by Ms. Hollahan for the 2017-2018 school year for PACE.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Dindal. Any further board comment or questions? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. A really good program and something that I know our board team's very proud of and our team at PACE works very hard with. So 810 graduates so far. I think last year we had right at 100 in the two semesters. So a great program. We'll move to consider FIR campus CIP targeted elements. So we've got a lot of acronyms there.
We're going to get right on that.
Mr. Munn, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, good evening. That's probably the first thing to address is that FIR actually stands for formerly IR. That's a mistake on my part. This is for currently improvement required campuses. And the CIP refers to their campus improvement plan targeted elements. So I apologize for the mistake on that.
That's fine.
The Texas Education Agency requires first-year improvement required campuses to identify targeted elements of their campus improvement plan, which are expected to significantly impact performance gaps. The agency requires board approval of the targeted elements. Both Lincoln Middle School and Lamar Elementary School campus leadership teams, as well as the professional service provider and a Region 15 representative participated in a process to identify focus areas and root causes. From there, objectives and strategies were developed to address gaps related to student, to state accountability. Systems are in place to regularly monitor progress and make adjustments as necessary as well. A copy of those targeted elements, objectives, and strategies for both campuses was provided last week for your review. If you have questions, I would entertain those now. Otherwise, I'm looking for approval of those targeted elements.
Thanks, Mr. Munn. Questions for? If not, we need a motion to approve the campus improvement plan targeted elements for Lamar Elementary School and Lincoln Middle School.
Sir? Move for approval? Second?
So we have a motion by Mr. Dindal and a second by Mr. Hernandez for the approval of our campus improvement plan with targeted elements for Lamar Elementary School and Lincoln Middle School, our two campuses that had improvement required from '16-'17 assessments. Are there any comments or questions or anything from our board team? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is, thanks, Dean. Our next item's item 12, consider lease of iPads to support teaching for learning. And Mr. Kimball is going to do that.
Good evening. Again, I want to talk with you a little bit about instructional technology and our conversations through the summer and this fall with Apple. And we're going to focus on iPads. And so when you think about the purpose of why we would want to be looking to infuse more iPads into our classrooms, I'll go back to the document that Dr. Ritter gave you, the learner profile. And really, when you start to look at the learner profile, that's where you hone in on some of the aspects that iPads can support kids in connecting globally. We know that our kids will compete with other students around the state, around the nation for spots at college. They will, they will compete with students across the nation, across the globe for jobs. And so this helps them connect globally, helps them to view problems with a global perspective and with technology as a tool to solve those and connect with others through collaboration. A lot of businesses now do work with people in a variety of places across the globe, but they can connect online. And then explores their curiosity and innovation because it allows them to easily differentiate how they learn, how they communicate their learning, how they show their advancement. So it enhances differentiation. But in addition to that, our CNI department has some very focused, purposeful ways that they intend for the iPads to be used. So I want Dr. Ritter to share a little bit about the view and the vision for those.
So as we spoke about our literacy initiative in the district, one of the ways that we anticipate utilizing these iPads in the classroom in elementary is through our guided reading structure with instruction for students with the teacher based on their individual reading level for differentiated instruction to really individualize that instruction to help our students improve from where they are. And they'll set goals and they'll work through digital portfolios using these iPads. And also they'll be able to access digital reading material through the iPads that are leveled to their specific reading level. We're just really excited about this opportunity and our teachers are looking forward to having these tools in the classroom. So, thank you.
In addition to the purpose, we also looked at how we provide professional development for our teachers in a way that makes them feel comfortable but also gives them good pedagogy in using the devices. Also support for our technology department as we roll them out, as we manage the devices. Additionally, we've talked with Apple about having a project manager because when you're going to put this many devices in play, it's great to have someone that helps manage not only the physical devices getting to kids' hands, but also all the infrastructure behind-the-scenes frameworks that have to be developed to manage apps, to manage the devices, and those kinds of things. Off-site receipt in preparation of the iPads so that it doesn't overload the technology department, they can continue working on the other strategies and initiatives that we have in place. Multiple device management software. And then also leasing versus purchasing. And leasing has become a very popular option for school districts. When you think about the pace at which technology improves, you know, today, by the time you go buy it at Best Buy and get it home, it's already out of date, it seems like. So sometimes leasing is a better option so that you can refresh those devices more frequently. So some of the options that we looked at, we looked at high school, one-to-one, some of the things that you would see at a high school. And then we also looked at elementary. And what we've settled with is to consider placing devices in our third through fifth grade classrooms for a couple reasons. One, we think that that's where they're going to make the most sense right now. But also, we can put more can put more devices in those classrooms. We have about 182 third through fifth grade classrooms, so this allows us to get a device in a teacher's hand and some other devices, up to 10 in a classroom. So, when we look at the lease, and when we look at the options, you can lease iPads for four years at nine tenths of 1.1 percent, and at the end of that time, you can own the iPads, or you can go through a third-party dealer and sell them back, recoup some of your money, and then refresh with newer iPads. And so, that's something that we'll, you know, look at as we get closer to that third or fourth year. And you can refresh in the third year or in the fourth year. So, what our request to you for your consideration is to consider the purchase of 2,128 gigabyte iPads, keyboards that go with those as well, because that's important for students. It also protects the devices. The case that we looked at has a strong protective element as well as a robust keyboard. I don't know if any of you use keyboards with devices like that, but sometimes you charge the keyboard separately than the device. These actually, when you charge the device, it charges the keyboard at the same time, so that's a nice feature. Charging and locking stations, so every classroom will have a station where they can lock them up and charge them at the same time, instead of having to go down the hall, put them in a cart, go back down the hall, get them, bring them back to their classroom, it'll be in their actual classroom. And then some of the infrastructure for technology, multiple device management software, which is critical instructional technology support, and the technology department, and then professional development for our teachers and leaders. And we actually had a conversation today with Apple, and kind of went through the professional development specific to our district. So, this purchase would be $1,189,056.17. We recommend the lease option, and last week, I think the lease option I had up there was like $297 or $298. That changed just slightly this week, because I left off a couple items. So, the lease option would be for four years, and it would be a commitment of $301,271.1 cent. If that one cent breaks the deal, I'll pay for it myself. So, that would be the lease option that we would recommend to you, and if that's the case, what we're asking the board to do is to approve the lease agreement and delegate the authority to Dr. Detloff to sign the agreement pending final review by our attorney.
Thanks, Mr. Kimball. We had a pretty healthy discussion about this last week, so, Dr. Detloff?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, and thank you, Mr. Kimball, Dr. Ritter, Dr. Bright, Shelley Hullahan, for their extensive work on this. And just a reminder that the learner is driving this lease, so we must meet the needs of our learners in SAISD, and we believe this is a way to make certain that they stay engaged and they stay relevant in a global marketplace to secure the jobs of the future. So, thank you for your work in this area, and I appreciate that we're meeting the needs of the learner.
Just a quick question, and forgot to ask this last week, are these the full-size iPads or the mini iPads?
They're not the iPad, the big ones, they're the regular size. Yes, they're not the small ones.
Is it like Mr. Dindell's?
That's the pro, that's the large size. These are the in-between size. Can't remember the exact, is it nine inches, 10 inches?
Mr. Kimball has one in his slot, Mr. Parker? Also, I'd like, also, I'd like to add that perhaps more than years past, we have the professional development to support this initiative, and I think that's a very exciting in our partnership and with our PD and HR department. We now have the professional training for our teachers to make sure that we implement this correctly and to benefit for students.
I'll also add, our intention as a second phase to this would be to take the last two, three years of iPad carts that we've placed on campuses and pull those back in, scrub them, get them prepped, and then reallocate those into K-2 classrooms. So, every K-2 classroom will also have, depending on numbers, five to six iPads as well. Now, some of those may be minis, because that's what we've purchased in the past, but it will reallocate our devices in a more meaningful and purposeful way.
Thanks, other questions, comments? So, the budget impact, even though this wasn't budgeted, the budget impacts is $301,000 annually for four years. And of course, we can budget for it in the future, but it wasn't budgeted for this year. And we have plenty of, we have a, we don't have a deficit budget, you know, we have a, we're in good shape as far as purchasing these. Any other board comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move for approval of the lease of 2,000 iPads to be placed in the grades three through five classrooms.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Dr. Kingman to approve the lease in the amount of $301,271.1 a penny for 2,000 iPads to be placed in three, grades three through five classrooms. Any other board comment or questions?
Mr. Lehman, just as Mr. Kimball and Ms. Ritter and Dr. Ritter have said, again, we're only covering a couple of grades, grades three through five with these devices, so it's a significant step, but there's still a way to go to get devices in the hands of all our students. But it's, again, it's, we are not strolling or crawling along anymore. We're making significant steps to take care of those needs. And another, I guess, Bright's part of a good thing about this project is that these iPads include the election material to support these devices, so that really helps with the budget process, when early on, they were iPads that had no, other than computing power, they didn't really have any programs that were preloaded into them that could help a student. So, along with professional development, and then also support from Apple and with the programs that'll be preloaded, it's gonna help tremendously as far as a technology piece in the hands of our teachers and our students, I think.
I'd like to also add that in case someone asks you, well, why are you only focusing on elementary, what about secondary? You did approve our capital outlay budget, which did have some money set aside for Mobile Device Initiative, which we've done for several years. So, we'll be working with campuses to choose those devices. Some may choose iPads, some may choose Chromebooks, but a lot of those will be targeted into the secondary campuses. We have run numbers, and we kind of know where are spots where we have the least amount of devices per student. That's will be our focus for that money that you approved in the capital outlay will be primarily secondary, since we're addressing elementary with this.
And I have just one concluding remark. This would not be possible without our technology department in Charlin. They are behind the scenes and making multiple platforms work. So, Charlin has also been engaged in many conversations, so I appreciate you guys and what you've done to make this seamless, because this can be very challenging, but you guys have made it happen, and it will benefit our students. So, thank you, Ms. Dool and our technology department.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further board comment?
Great job. I'm glad we're moving forward on this. This is, we're catching up. That's what I love about it. We're catching up, and that's good.
Thanks Gerard. Any other comments? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider the nomination of candidates to serve on the Board of Directors of the Tom Green County Appraisal District for the 2018-2019 term. I think everyone's placed, the appraisal district left us, you know, kind of the process by which they choose, how the chief appraiser appoints people to that board, or comes up with names, and then who has votes, what entities represented within the appraisal district, and who has votes represented by the amount of money of appraised value you have in each case. So, as we've discussed before, the Snaezo ISD is 40.6 percent of that levy for 18, or the estimated levy, I mean, excuse me, of the levy for 16, I can't read. So, that's an actual levy amount of the $141 million of tax levy, then ours is $57 million. So, that's, and the current members on the board are also listed on that. So, we need a resolution to nominate five board members to serve a two-year term on the Tom Green County Appraisal District Board of Directors. And those current members are John Begnold, John Kahn, Russell DeVore, Louis Gomez, and Bob Reeves. And they are all currently serving and wish to continue to serve. So, the resolution, I guess I could read that, it says, "Resolution Nominate Candidates for Election to the Tom Green County Appraisal District Board of Directors, Whereas Section 603, the Property Tax Code State of Texas, allows each taxing unit in an appraisal district to nominate one candidate for each position to be filled on the Board of Directors of the Tom Green County Appraisal District, and whereas there are five positions to be filled on the Board of Directors of the Tom Green County Appraisal District, and whereas Snaezo Independent District, School District is the taxing unit of the Tom Green County Appraisal District, now therefore be it resolved that the Snaezo Independent School District nominates the following candidates as nominees for election to the Snaezo, excuse me, to the Tom Green County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the term January 1 of 2018 through December 31 of 2019." So, we would need a motion to approve five members of that board. Do we have a motion?
I would, I'm looking at Gerard, but unless there's somebody else, I would move that we approve a resolution nominating these five persons, and it would be the five that are current members of the Board of Directors, John Begnold, John Kahn, Russell DeVore, Louis Gomez, and Bob Reeves.
Okay. So, we have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Hernandez.
I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, I think the reason why we're kind of looking down at Gerard is historically, we've had somebody that, you know, might have expressed some interest, but we tasked him with maybe checking on that. And it's not, I think I'm speaking on behalf of our entire board team, it's not an indication that we're not, we don't have confidence in these people. We just had someone had reached out historically and shown some interest in that. But we feel pretty comfortable with these five, and certainly their willingness to serve in this capacity is a huge public service, and we appreciate them willing to do so. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the current appraisal district board of directors. Do we have any more comment or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. I think that concludes our business for this evening. Our announcements are our TASSA and Tasby Convention is scheduled for October 6 through the 8. I think Becky's been working on that, but we've got, we'll leave here on Thursday and work on some details later, but leave Thursday and attend all day Friday and through most of the day on Saturday, and then we'll, I think we're planning on coming back on Saturday afternoon. So, y'all make sure you have that on your calendar and work with Becky's on arrangements, travel arrangements. Our special financing pre-agenda workshop, I think Becky's supposed to remind me that I won't, I wanted to see if Max is gonna be here for that meeting, because I'm not gonna be here on October the 10th.
That's a Tuesday.
Yeah, that's a Tuesday meeting as opposed to a Monday. So, might check your, okay. And then we have our regular board meeting on the 16th of October, which is a Monday. And that's all the announcements, it looks like we have. I also asked Dr. Detloff, I noticed that on our learner profile, we had a character trait focus, and I asked him if he'd maybe give a report on that at a future meeting on, you know, how we're dealing with teaching character traits and something, okay, so, thank y'all. So, we'll add that to our agenda, if you don't mind, Becky, for October as a report. Do we have any other board business? And there's, I don't think there's any need for us to go into closed session this evening, so here, no objection, we'll stand adjourned.